Okay, all right, we will go ahead and call to order. It is 6:04 PM. I forget that I don't have to take notes. So I will stop that.
That's it?
Yeah. So we will roll call in. Eric Ayette.
Here.
Let's see, let's go down the line. Sam Hunter.
Here.
Lynda Markey.
Here.
Mary LaChapelle. You can yell from over there, it's fine.
Here.
Megan Harvey, here. I am acting chair tonight because unfortunately Laura Scott is out sick. We shall miss her dearly. Okay, so we are going to start with correspondence. And that is me. And I don't have any correspondence to report that's unrelated to the Playground Ad Hoc Committee. And I think that I will give you an update on that in a little bit. I don't think it's really correspondence. I think it's, well, I guess I'll just give it now, just in case. I have some correspondence from a few members of the Ad Hoc Committee. Jackie Janulowicz and trying to see if there are other members of the committee. I guess that was the only member of the Ad Hoc Committee who wrote with some information that she has been working on as we are progressing forward in our Playground efforts. And I also have an update, an email received from Sandra Alton, just sort of expressing thanks for this process happening and providing some input on the Playground progress thus far. I also have a great email from June Stackhouse, who is one of the students in the school, I believe a fifth grader, who is working along with her peers on the script and sort of the outline of a video that they're going to create about the need for and their efforts in, yes, and so I have a first draft of their video script that they sent. Isn't that wonderful?
That's great.
Yeah, so thank you to June. That's all I have for correspondence. I don't have any gifts to report, do I? No. Okay, great. I'm confirming that I don't have any gifts to report. Do we have any of our, either of our students here? We don't have Asta because...
She's at We the People.
She's at We the People. They just arrived, did I hear? You say they arrived?
Washington DC this afternoon. They're at 1:50.
She said they were 10 minutes from the archives at 1:50. I got a touch.
Amazing.
Yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt, but...
We'll take it. That's great. So we're very excited for our We the People.
They compete their first hearing tomorrow.
Okay. We wait with bated breath. And I don't see Kenzie, who was our middle school. Every other meeting. So no Kenzie today. So that moves us right on to public comment. And I will open the floor for public comment. As a reminder, we ask you to give us your name and keep your comments to three minutes. We are not able to respond back. I'm just talking to Phil about a minute to let anyone in the room or online decide that they would like to offer their comments. I give them ample opportunity. Seeing none, I will close public comment and turn it over to our interim superintendent, Beninda For.
Okay, great. Well, today we're excited to say we're now on fourth quarter, right? So we're coming down the home stretch. So there's going to be lots of information coming to you from the principals about different activities because, you know, the end of the year is always a very busy time where we do all kinds of shows and celebrations and want to end the year on a high point. So please make sure you're reading your newsletters and we'll also be putting some information on the website. So one of those things that you do at the end of the year, every year, is that you have to update your high school program of studies. So tonight, Mr. Evans is with us on Zoom and he'd like to present to all of us now the EHS Program of Study changes.
Good evening, everyone. So you can hear me.
We, oh, that thing is muted over there. Sorry, hang on.
Oh, do you have a remote?
Yes, but that doesn't do anything. Do you want to see if there's a way to unmute up there?
To, um, to try to speak.
See, it looks like there's a mute button in the corner. You what?
I could hear him really loud.
Yeah.
I think it's just on...
From this.
See the, like, bottom left corner?
Right here.
Well, I just mean the symbol on the TV. I don't actually know how to make it go away.
By the left, like, left corner, bottom corner. By, by the...
That's the microphone.
To the mayor's corner, like, all the way to the mayor, as far as you can go to the corner, down below.
I don't know if there's anything to push there.
I don't think you can actually click it.
Yeah, it's just me saying, I think the whole TV screen is muted.
Is it a touchscreen screen?
That might be part of my problem, but it's not a touchscreen.
Oh, it's not a touchscreen screen. Oh, would you mind trying again? Sorry, though.
Sure. Does that work?
Nope.
We can hear that.
We can hear.
Can we put the volume up maybe?
That's what I was trying to see if there was...
The volume on the screen is up. Try to, the volume on the tablet?
On this thingy here. All the way up.
Uh, go to the speakers here.
Oh, over there, speaker?
Which one? Sorry. Mobile hotspot, accessibility.
Down.
Is that...
Try to swipe.
Check, check.
Can we try, Bill?
How's that? Is that better?
Try, try it on echo test.
You try again.
Uh, hello?
There you go.
Hi.
Sam did it.
All right, well done, Sam. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
At this point, I think it would be jinxing us to ask if I could share the screen. So I'm just going to ask.
Share the screen.
You can, you can, the screen share should be easy.
Yes.
All right. So somebody can...
We need to make him, um, closed. Okay.
All right.
All the things now.
Uh... Hmm, what is it?
Oh, the stool.
Success?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, so I apologize. This document is 10 pages long and there's like 16 items, but I do think we can go through it relatively quickly. I'm not going to read everything. I'd like to summarize each of the changes and obviously entertain any questions at any point. I won't be able to see you if you raise your hand, so if you just, you know, give a shout if you have a question along the way. Okay?
Yes, sounds good.
Right. So this year we were able to really take a look at, you know, with any document that has been around for a long time, there are some places where language becomes arcane and we have an opportunity to go in and do some changes. Those changes, as you all know, have to be updated frequently so, or often you have to go back and find more things. So a lot of this is stuff that maybe should have happened in the past, but we were able to find it and make some corrections this year. So I don't want on page nine, the graduation requirements. This language that's being added was in response to students choosing on their own to take enrichment classes, either online or during the summer at colleges or that kind of thing, sort of like, you know, pre-high, pre-college, high school courses that different places offer, and then wondering if they could place those items on their transcript and have an effective GPA. And the answer to that is no, because we, we have our own set of courses and we don't just take other courses and add them to the transcript or the GPA. So what this language does, and you'll see this repeats in a couple of the places, is says, you can take that class, you can enjoy the enrichment of it, we can even put it on the transcript, but it won't contribute to your credits toward graduation and it won't contribute toward your GPA unless we've had a conversation and we've decided that this class is something that you need and it's been approved by your school counselor and the school council. So obviously there are some exceptions where we want students to take classes outside of the school day, but if a student just says, you know what, I'm going to go take this pre-chemistry class at UMass in the summer, it's being offered by school students, can I put it on my GPA? The answer is going to be no. So that's one. Also, on page nine, the graduation requirements, this is again, language that will be repeated later. We'll see that here in the Performing Arts and Technology Department, we had a line for computer credits and really like, there is no like difference between computer and technology at this point. So what we've done is update this so that students still need to earn 12 credits, but they're now going to get four in the Fine and Performing Arts, four in Technology, and then a choice of additional four credits in either art or technology. And we've done away with this computer language, which just confused people anyway. Item three on page 10, the competency determination standards. This is language that you already approved a few months ago when we had to submit CD language in place of MCAS. So this is the exact same language and you've already seen it and approved it. Obviously adding it to the course of studies, program of studies. Item four on page 10, the course level and expectations. So what we're, what we're adding here is just really a language that says that if a student wants to take a higher level course, an honors or advanced placement course, it used to be that there was a teacher recommendation and that was sort of the end of the process. What we're doing now is sort of putting in a more robust process where there's a meeting and a contract agreement and some considerations so that there can be a more meaningful conversation. If the teacher is saying, I'm concerned about you entering an honors class, but a student still wants to do that, we're not denying them that opportunity, but we want to have a conversation, make sure the student is fully prepared and understands what the expectations will be. So that's what that particular language is there for. Item five, this is enrichment classes outside of the school day. Again, there's some redundancy there from the, from what we just talked about is just a separate, pardon me while I plug in here. Just a separate portion of the, of the program of studies where the language really needed to be repeated. So again, it indicates that a course, an enrichment course, can appear on the transcript for informational purposes, but not be factored into the student's GPA nor will their credits be counted toward graduation. Item six on page 15, we're, we used to have in the old language here, a five-day add-drop period at the beginning of the school year that counted for both semesters. We're adding a two-day add-drop period at the beginning of the spring semester to account for students who have, you know, changes happen during the first semester and they want to change something up in the second semester. Really just makes sense to do that, so. This early graduation is a separate part of the program of studies on page 15, and we just added the new competency determination language to that. English 12 honors, for the last several years, we've only had students take English 12 academic level and English 12 at the AP level. So there was a, students who, and there was interest in adding an honors level at the English 12. So this is old language that has been out of the program of studies for a little while. We're adding it back in. And a number of students have signed up for it. This change in the, item nine on page 40, the math course descriptions, this change is a little bit of a more substantial change. So we have been using a model for students that were behind grade level as they come in in ninth grade called Extended Algebra A and Extended Algebra B, which was two different classes, one in the fall semester and one in the spring semester. And students would basically, instead of taking algebra in a semester-long course, they would take it over the full year. The math department felt like there was a better way to do that so that those students could get that foundational information and build their skills, but then join the rest of their peers in the algebra class in the spring. So instead of having students go from Extended Algebra A to Extended Algebra B, the idea with this realignment is to have them take Foundations of Algebra in the fall and then join an existing Algebra One class in the spring so that it's more integrated with the rest of their, of their grade level. So that's the course description there. I think this is a really good idea. It's more inclusive and it doesn't leave those students sort of isolated from their peers as they, as they go through the math curriculum. Another change, this was simply an oversight, we should have done this the year before. AP Statistics is a two semester class, so we've changed the, this course description from one, um, one narrative to two narratives to describe the two different semesters. AP Stats A and then AP Stats B. More in line with what we actually do. Number 11 on page 45, the Science Department makeup policy. So each department is working to have a consistent makeup policy within their department. The Science Department submitted this. It basically goes through different levels of courses, how students can make up missed tests or quizzes or homework assignments, how much time they have and how it impacts their grades. So again, feel free to peruse that. I don't think it would be helpful to read it all through, but we do consider makeup to be an important part of what we do at the high school. We understand that holding all students to same time constraints at all times is not necessarily equitable. So there is a makeup policy all the way through. On page 12, excuse me, item 12 on page 46, the Science Department has submitted this as a new graphic for their halfways. And what they are trying to emphasize here is really that the, the meat of it is right in this sentence right here, college-bound students are recommended to take four, four science classes. So science is a three-year requirement for graduation. The first two years are locked in, earth science and the environment for ninth grade, and then either biology or physics in 10th grade. These applied scientists, which appear on the right side of this chart, students can access some of these in ninth grade, some of these in 10th grade, and then in 11th and 12th grade, they have the, all of these choices that they can make. And what they're saying, what the Science Department wants to emphasize with students is if they intend to go to a four-year college, they should take four classes from this side of the, of the chart. That's not a mandate, it's a recommendation. And of course, school counselors work with students to make sure that they are, that their transcript is going to reflect what they need to enter the college of their choice. Item 13, and our Special Education Department, we've separated our study skills class into two distinct classes. This was the description, the old description, study and transition skills for grades nine through 12. The new language has a study skills class for grades nine and 10 and study and transition skills for grades 11 and 12. And the goal here is to really focus on executive functioning skills here in ninth and 10th grade and 11th and 12th, continue that work as well as start doing more transition work with students as they prepare for whatever comes close second year. Item 14 on page 61, just updating the description of the PACE program. This is a special education self-contained classroom to work with students that have complex learning needs. And so having had the program, paused it and had it back, we felt like an updated description was, was in order. So that's what that is. Be more reflective of what we actually do there. Item 15, now we're in the Technology and Visual and Performing Arts Department, so the graduation requirements that I talked about earlier up at the top are reflected here as well. So you have four credits for Fine and Performing Arts, four for Technology, and then another four for either one or the other. And that's it. Four questions?
Any questions? Yes, there, go ahead.
Thank you, that was great. I appreciate the graphics. So when I'm looking at graduation requirements and how there are some where in, you can take them in different grades, is there anything in writing about a student's progress towards diploma? Like in just the, your, I check the box, like, your student has taken, you know, biology or not taking biology, which they have to?
Yeah. So what the student, what the school counselors do with students, they have what they call a credit audit sheet. And so they meet with students periodically. And when we do the, when we do course selection at the, which we just got done doing with the students, the first thing they do is a credit audit. So they, they're given a sheet, say, these are all the graduation requirements, here's what they are, subject by subject, and here's your transcript. So now you can check off what you've done and know what you still need to do. I assume that that was your question, Mayor?
Yeah, and, and I guess, I, I am asking about the in-writing, so you know, you live, you live with teenagers professionally. So they're, you know, they come home and are asked, hey, how are you doing? What happened in school? Did you see what you need for, you know, for a diploma? And they'll say, yeah, and then go about their day or evening. And I'm just, you know, how can parents, if you're under 18, how do parents get this information in writing? So they know where their student is?
So not to get too deep into the weeds of the process that the school counselors go through, because I don't sit in on all those meetings, but I would, I would say quite confidently that parents are very much included in the process of course selection and making sure students are on track. And that, the transcript audit, their full transcript, everything's on Power School, so they can access that and they can always call the school counselor if they need confirmation. Student comes homes and says, yeah, it's all good and doesn't show them anything, they're going to have to give us a call because we might be sending it home and they may not be getting it. So, but it is available, definitely for sure.
I'm, you know, worst, you know, yeah, worst-case scenario, or maybe I'm overthinking it, with the criteria for high school diploma, just the framework changing without MCAS or whatnot, I'm, I'm worried that a parent would come in and think there's more negotiation or assumption that requirements have been met because of where the MCAS night, you know, honestly now falls under regulation, but also how it's been reported in the news, you know, in that confusion of, oh, no MCAS, so, you know, everything should be fine. So, you know, kind of thinking ahead, well, this, this could be a year where there's just misunderstanding on the process.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. We've, we've addressed some confusion and talked about the new CD that you all approved a couple of months ago, which, you know, some people will have absorbed and some won't. So we, you know, understand the necessity for repetition. I would just say, in terms of, no student will enter senior year needing something that they can't get without there being a serious conversation between the school counselor and parent and student. So the counselors track this stuff very carefully, but just in terms of like the switch over from MCAS to the CD requirements, the course requirement passing, I think we can do some more clarification on that, more, more information can go out about that. So that's a fair point.
Moving on to number 13, special programs. What's the criteria to access this, like, special programs or the classes listed underneath?
Sure. Just scroll down. So for, so these are all rooted in a student's IEP. So if the special education team for a student feels that a study skills class would be beneficial or necessary in order for them to make adequate progress, then that gets built into their IEP and then they're assigned that class. Only students who have study skills in their IEP take that class. The same would be true for the PACE program or any other specialized special education program. It would have to go through the IEP team and there has to be a determination that that is the least restrictive environment in which the student can be successful at this time, with the goal obviously is moving down to the most least restrictive environment that they can be successful in. So most least, did I just say that? Yeah.
Okay.
I think we'll be toward that.
We don't, you know.
What does PACE stand for? I'm sorry, I just, I forgot.
Yeah, it stands for P-A-C-E.
Boom.
It's what the middle school uses and we, we stopped trying to like redefine every program and just decided to adopt the same language that this, students were experiencing at Mountain View. So I think they invented it, so you should ask them.
I mean, that, right, right, every good administrator, what do you, you know, deflect?
Yeah.
We generally just refer to them by the teacher's name.
There you go. Okay. And, okay, so round that, indicated by IP. So if a student had a 504 plan, could they access these programs because it might be in the 504 or is it limited to IEP?
The programs that are listed here, the study skills and PACE, actually 504s do not qualify for special education services. They're completely different pathways, so no, no 504 student would be. If they really needed a study skills class or PACE program, then they should be evaluated for an IEP.
Great, okay. Special ed, can a student on an IEP, like, if the study skills or study and transition skills, could you have that in like the course selection related to the IEP that was specific and then also take an appropriate math class?
Yeah, so study skills is, does not substitute for any of the graduation requirements. There is room in our schedule for students to fulfill all of their subject level requirements and also take study skills. So it doesn't replace math classes. Most of the students that take study skills are inclusion, are inclusion classes in their academics. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And, and so the PACE program is substantially separate?
Yeah.
And so if a PACE student, for, and I don't, you know, for whatever reason, can they access a less restrictive educational study with the support of PACE?
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of different pathways for that. One, the IEP team might determine that PACE is an appropriate place for part of the day.
Okay.
Two, the PACE teacher, a full-time special education teacher, in our four-period schedule will need one period as a prep and therefore will teach three classes. And a fully integrated PACE student will have, will be in that program for three periods and then push out to an elective class of some sort that would be supported either by a parent that's part of PACE or some other parent, or depending on what the team determines the level of support they need. And find, I mean, the same is also going to be true of our life skills students, the same is true of any, of all, whatever special program that we would put in, there would be at least one class that was not in that program that would be an inclusion class, but we would obviously choose carefully to ensure that it met their needs and it was not going to overwhelm them or, and that it was fully supported.
Great. So is it a possibility, depending on the makeup of the PACE, any given PACE cohort in one of those periods, that a regular education teacher would come in and co-teach with a special education teacher?
We've done that. It's, that, we've done that when we had the ability, the flexibility in the regular ed teacher schedule to do that. And it's been successful. Done that math, we've done it in science, we've done it in English. Done that math, we've done it in science, we've done it in English at various times in similar programs. We don't always have that flexibility, um, and we haven't mapped out this year's schedule, hasn't been built yet. But it is, uh, a good model that I really appreciate. The PACE teacher, um, you know, when you get into high school level classes, might not have, um, the expertise to teach all of it, so we do have to do a fair amount of sharing of the content. And to have a teacher push into the class and co-teach it with the PACE teacher is really a great model. We just don't always have the luxury of being able to do that scheduling wise.
And, and it, it's a possibility that the cohort of the PACE, uh, any PACE class, just, it might not be appropriate for the best educational intervention or, or whatnot as well.
Correct, yeah, and, and they might be, um, yeah, their, their needs are not going to align perfectly, that's for sure.
And so is there a path or what the path would be for a PACE student to get a diploma, given the requirements that we've gone over before?
Absolutely, so, um, a student, yeah, I, I'll, I would say that to this point, PACE students are all on a diploma track. Students that are not on a diploma track, again, that is a determination made by the IEP team.
Yep.
And that determination is made, you know, relatively early in their high school career so that we can shape their, their, their classes to meet what their potential needs are gonna be. I would say that really it's, that's more restricted to our life skills program.
And when we're talking about like the life skill program, like early on, those program, those students are likely to have a very robust transition plan to
Absolutely.
to post high school, uh, where best they could go.
Yep, and they're likely, you know, some of them will, will stay with us until their 22 years, their 22nd birthday. Some will be, will transition to a, uh, work training environment. You know, obviously it's, it's very individualized.
If, if there's co-teaching, so I guess then my, which I, you know, think maybe, uh, is a future year budget request, but if you could, well, okay, so you have a teacher pushing in for English into a PACE, um, program, well, that semester, could those students, uh, would that count as a graduation requirement if it was just a, a semester?
Yeah, absolutely.
And if the group of students, if it was appropriate, there could be a model. Here comes the budget request, drum roll. Yeah, I feel like we're the business manager right now. We could hire or set up that model for it to be more consistent instead of based, yeah.
It's a great idea.
Hey, I'm not promising anything, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
So that could be a more consistent model that, rather than, let's see where kids are or, or resources available.
Yeah, I, I, my, my first wish, Mayor, is that you stick around long enough for us to be able to make that happen, um, because you're suggesting it, because I think it's a, it's an excellent way to approach this. The thing that I would just caution all of us is that what we have discovered is the PACE program changes pretty dramatically year to year depending on the needs of the students, that, that answer. So, you know, what we've done in the past doesn't always apply to what we're about to do coming up.
Understood, I, I think it would be an interesting option within that program for high school students, especially when maybe there's a student out there that needs the PACE program, but student and family are very interested, interested to, to work towards a diploma, that might not be available somewhere else.
Yeah, so, and just to be clear, PACE, the PACE program really is, um, modeled for students who are struggling socially, emotionally, um, and relationship wise. There are different programs that, that are, uh, modeled for students who have more intellectual needs. So I think, I, I hear everything that you're saying. I think I would apply a lot of it to different programs than to PACE, but I understand exactly what you mean. And I would say that, again, the only place where we have non-high school track, very rare that we have students that go through, um, that are not on a high school track, but they're usually coming out of life skills or another special ed program that is already existing and has been for a while. Everyone that's been through the PACE program has been on a graduation track.
Great, um, last question. So if a student from whatever program or indicated by IEP is not going to make graduation requirements, do, do districts still do like certificate of completion? Like, will they get to walk over the stage or on the stage?
Yeah, so we had, we've had students in the past who did not make the CD because of MCAS when that was the issue. If it's credit, if it's a credit issue, no. You have to complete the credits in order to participate. But if it's strictly a competency determination, yes, you issue a certificate of completion. And that has happened in the past and students have been able to move on and be successful.
Um, uh, okay, so I maybe fibbed in the last one. So if it is because of credits and, and this not much, this may not be true in every situation, can a student still make up credits like during a summer program or school vacation to end up with a diploma, but not walk with their class?
Yeah, so if you get, so let, let me make a, a brief example of this. So the new competency determination requires that a student pass either biology or physics at some point during their four years in order to qualify under the CD, right? So, but the graduation requirement for science is three years, 12, 12 credits. So if they pass earth science, then pass chemistry and then pass anatomy and physiology, they'll have their 12 credits, but they won't have passed the CD. So we could still say that they've earned enough credits to, um, have, to, for a certificate of completion, but not earn the diploma because they missed the CD. Does that make sense so far?
Yep.
So, but if they're credit deficient, um, and they get to the end of their senior year and they're credit deficient, they do not participate in graduation, but they absolutely have the opportunity to attend summer school, come back the next year, do whatever is necessary to get them to be, uh, to earn their diploma and then we issue their diploma when they're, when they're done.
Got it. That, okay, I, I'm, I'm following that. I thought of one more question, I forgot it, but.
Well, you said that was the last one.
Uh, and two, two questions ago, I mean, who believes in elected officials, right? I mean, you believe the school committee, but, yeah.
Thought about how many questions we have, move on.
So that's, um, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Anyone else?
I just have a question about algebra.
Sure.
So I, I like this, um, it's further ahead than I thought it was.
Foundations of algebra.
Yes, I really like this. I know last year we were talking, um, at the beginning of, well, kind of at the end of last school year, beginning of this school year, just about how, um, a lot of our students seem to be starting ninth grade, needing more support around math and algebra. Um, and so I think this is a great idea. I, I really, um, I like the way that this is written. I'm just kind of wondering like what we're, if we're anticipating this to be like a course that, like, many of our students are going to need, or is this gonna be like a smaller group? Like, what, what are your thoughts?
So those are gonna be determined by the eighth grade team. And so, um, you know, we, I, I don't, uh, I have the numbers. I could look up the numbers, but it would, it would require me doing a lot of this.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So, I think
Yeah.
We have, we have enough to, to run, I think, a couple of sections of students are being recommended for. And we, those are, are gonna be smaller classes anyway.
Yeah.
So, I, you know, hopefully, um, there'll be a point where that course is no longer necessary, but we are where we are right now.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. I think it's very like, um, I like how responsive it is to the needs of the community right now and like the needs of where our students are right now. So, um, I appreciate, I appreciate rethinking that.
I remember, okay. Um, so that, what we're looking at now, does it change, just cause I don't, every school seems to do it different, does it change, um, uh, the formula or the method or class rank? Cause it used to be like, some colleges really wanted that and
No, we don't, we don't, we don't do class rank.
Okay, oh, all right, thanks, okay.
We, we are salutatorian and salutatorian, most of those are for scholarship purposes, but, um, but beyond that, we don't do ranking.
And, and the salutatorian and salutatorian, is that within their student file? I mean, I know kids keep, um, but like, is that within their student file to give it to the colleges? Or, you know, um, is it like a speech?
That's a, I, oftentimes there's money associated with those titles, so we don't want to deny those things. But, um, yeah, I believe that balance out, I mean, I, I don't know if it appears officially on the transcript, I'd, I'd have to ask.
Okay, no, I just, I, I, you know, there've been, in, in other schools, you, you know, you read about, like, the salutatorian and salutatorian and they get to do a speech and they get to do all these things. It's been very contentious, given that so many, even though not everyone has the, the standard of what, um, a salutatorian and a salutatorian have. You know, there's so many ways to measure, uh, strengths in a student that, I know it's been a conflict in, in others. You know, it could have been a conflict here and that shows how much you pay attention. But I, I've just heard some really awkward situations where, um, there have been a lot of deserving students and the criteria of those two are being like, uh, archaic. Now, did I agree or disagree, but just putting it out there.
Yeah, not everybody does it anymore, um, and certainly welcome the conversation if, if, if the community wants to engage in that. I'm not, um, I'm not opposed to that conversation.
Yeah, just again, I know it's very important to get into schools and, you know, totally get that. But just bringing it up as a conversation point, thank you very much for that explanation. I am now truly done.
Sam, did you have other questions?
Um.
Laura, I see you, we're gonna see if Sam is up if I was first.
How about, how about Laura goes?
Okay, Laura, go ahead, go ahead with your question.
I promised myself I wasn't gonna antagonize everybody. I have a really kind of tangential question for you, Bill, that it's sort of on topic and sort of not, but it's been a point of curiosity. Can you tell me regarding the health and wellness curriculum at the high school, are CPR and first aid a part of that curriculum at all?
No.
Okay.
But I can say they are in the middle school. I know, um, Ms. Tally got, uh, what is the name of that mannequin that can
The CPR mannequin.
Yeah, the CPR mannequin that, uh, is gender neutral or both option? I don't, I don't know, but anyway, yes, we have in the middle school though.
Yeah, we should maybe look into see if we could incorporate that. I wonder if maybe we could even partner with the fire department or, just something I was thinking about. It's a useful skill for citizens.
It is a useful skill and I, I do appreciate that, um, the fire department has offered to partner with us to do it for our staff. I think students are welcome to join those because typically those sessions are after school. But working them into the health curriculum, um, would be tricky just because of time. We don't have a lot of time in that, in that curriculum. Um, it's a quarter-long course and there's a lot to cover.
Yeah, understood, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? And did you have any?
No. I, not about the documents.
Mayor, the question.
I would just, and maybe it's to the, the chair more than Ms. Will Evans, but with like CPR and first aid, my concern with that being about part of the curriculum, and I know time is tight in every school day, um, you get certified and you technically could get certified in your freshman year, not keep it up by your senior year, the cer, the certificate would not be valid and the curriculum for those, and it changes a lot, um, uh, could be no longer valid. It's not like taking an English class in freshman year and then, I don't know, that, I could be, I'm not gonna. And it doesn't, the, the value of that is, it doesn't go away. Like, English lit is, English lit is, English lit. And for those who are applying to vocational certificate programs and college programs, very good extracurricular, uh, to have on your, um, on your, uh, whatever you do, application. And there are really flexible first aid, first, you know, infant, lifeguard, um, that are amazingly, uh, effective, but also geared to, uh, different types of learners, language, you know, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. And Laura, I see that you just put your hand back up. I would just add to that, a cool thing, and this is all, now we're just sort of sit-balling about like extracurricular ideas and I appreciate that you are tolerating this, uh, Mr. Evans. But CPR and a stop the bleed, I don't know if we've ever done a stop the bleed, um, trainings or offer that to high school students for, as like an extracurricular, but that would be really interesting to, uh, anyway, this is just a comment. Laura, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I was just saying that maybe this, we shouldn't put this onto the high school administration. Maybe this is a central office issue where we just make it a priority to work with the fire department to offer these on a regular basis, like once a semester, make it open to the public after school or evenings or something and just advertise, just so it's a revolving, um, opportunity for students and community members, you know? I haven't been certified in God knows how long, so I think a lot of, get out of it.
I think a lot of students would want to take advantage of it.
Yeah, and there's distinctions between whether your hands only CPR certified versus fully CPR. There's so, there's a lot to, and we appreciate that you let us talk about this, Mr. Evans. Do you have any other?
It was a pleasure to spend time with you all.
Okay, well, I have a, just like a, I think my colleagues have asked everything I had questions about except for just this one, I think, about the, um, it was page 10, uh, number four, page 10, course levels and expectations, so students can sort of lobby with their parents to get into an AV class, even if they're not, or an honors class, if they're not, um, recommended for it. I'm just curious if that, if they do successfully lobby it in a class and then they find they're over their heads, is there an option for them to then switch back out of it or do we do that?
So, uh, there's, there's a, two different scenarios there as well. One is you're in a exclusively honors or AP class, in which case you really have the five-day window for drop dead. Sometimes exceptions get made, but, um, the concern is you can't always transition into a, a, another class that might not work in your schedule and you might be switching out of something and going into a completely different class that has been, that you've missed two or three weeks ago. So that is more challenging. The other scenario is a class that is, um, a combination of academic and honors levels where there's two different sets of expectations, they're, but they're all in the same room. And in that class, there's typically in the syllabus, um, if a student wants to make a switch either up or down, they have to do it by a certain point. So you can't say, you know, um, a quarter, halfway through the class, I'm gonna switch now to academic. You have to make that determination within a certain amount of time. And I can't tell you specifically in those situations, I think it's probably like, more like 10 days. But, cause they, you're not actually changing your schedule, you're just changing the level of expectation within.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I just was curious how you handled it with that. Okay, the last question I have is about the makeup policy. So there's a science one that was included here, is that varied by department? Like, is there a science one and then there's a different English one or, or is it?
Yeah, so my hope is that by next year, you'll, you'll be seeing one of those for each one of the departments, but it does vary from department to department because, for a couple of reasons. One is different departments have been doing different things for a long time. And they have found ways to make it work within their department. And there's a question, um, content-wise about relevance when you're, you want to accept work up to a certain point, but there's a point where handing in something becomes no longer useful or relevant to what's going on. So, um, what I often refer to as drop dead date for an assignment, um, it might be the day of the test, it might be the end of the quarter, it might be the end of the semester in some places. So, uh, rather than dictate to all of the departments exactly what the makeup policy should be, what we've said is everybody needs to have one, please craft one that works for your department. So students will have to adapt to different So students will have to adapt to different ones in different departments, but I think they do that already, and rather successful.
Makes sense to me. Oh, we do have another question.
Well, there's other questions for our comment. I had in the section two where the language was changed between, with the performing arts, computer and technology. I just wanted to make note, as someone who is a fine arts major in person, this really opens up a pathway here, because before, a student needed to take four credits in, in performing arts, and then they needed to take 12, eight more in computer and technology. This way, if a student, they have to have a taste of both. They have to have performing arts, they have to have a taste of technology. And then they're allowed to kind of make a decision of which way they want to supplement that, which opens up a pathway in fine arts there, or in arts for students. And I just wanted to make note of that, and appreciative of that.
Yep, thank you. I'll share that with the staff if there are any.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, go ahead.
Phil, how does, Principal Evans, how does the, this CD connect into dual enrollment? Like, can a student take a science class that's not offered in a particular semester to meet that science requirement, or anything a dual enrollment is just a plus of credits?
Right, so we have dual enrollment classes with Mount, with Holyoke Community College, with UMass, and there's opportunities through GCC as well, I believe. So if a student in their junior or senior year wishes to take a dual enrollment class, that class is counted on their transcript. It counts towards our graduation requirements for credits, and it is incorporated into the GP, into the GPA, and it's counted, I believe, as an AP class.
Great, thank you. Principal Evans, thank you. This was a really great discussion. I'm sure this is more than you bargained for, but also maybe you're used to us at this point, so. It just is, I appreciate the level of detail you were able to get into with us and our discussion around it.
No, it's comprehensive as can be.
Okay, so we have to go ahead and approve it. So I will entertain a motion to approve, how do we want to say this? The EHS Program of Study Studies Changes and Updates.
Uh, so, go ahead. Keep going.
I subdue.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, do we need to roll call? No, we don't need to roll call. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, did you have anything else for superintendent update, Bill? Okay, great. So we will move along to our business update. Thank you so much.
Good evening. In your packet is the business manager's report. As of the date, I put together this report, which was on the 3rd. 67.77% of our appropriation has been spent or been covered. That number will fluctuate as we use the offsets that were built into the budget using circuit breaker funds, using school choice, things like that. We'll keep you posted. We will talk much more about the status of the budget at our next meeting. One thing I did want to let you know about is the district has been awarded the OSCE Mass Community Grant. It's a $37,500 grant to support middle school science curriculum, which I know is something that a lot of people have been excited about. So it allows us to purchase a really highly rated, high-quality science curriculum that they will start piloting next year. In fact, teachers this year will be able to take some professional development, have some model lessons, get their hands on the curriculum materials. And the goal of this grant is that it is available for the next three years to rule out implementation of that new science curriculum at the middle school.
Great.
We did have auditors in the district here last week completing the interview report audit and the, starting the work on the single audit required for federal grants. The interview report audit is essentially complete. I'm waiting on her final report, which will be shared with the school committee. There was one amendment that they wanted us to make that was just an issue of where we put a number, but there weren't any other major issues. But if there are any findings, I will obviously share them with the committee and how we plan to address them. And in your packet also is the personnel report for March. The two items that we need to discuss are two of the large contracts that we have with our vendors. The first is our regular school, regular school transportation contract. The current contract has a three-year term. We are currently in year three. The contract allows us, or gives us the flexibility to enact optional renewals for the next two years, should we choose. The current renewal term, if we choose to exercise it, would be a 3% increase in transportation. My recommendation to the committee is that we take advantage of that option to renew. Given conversations that I've had with other business managers, transportation increases this year have been in the 6%, 7%, 8%, 10%, 12% ranges. So I, I think going up to bid right now is not the move for us, and we should exercise our renewal options. So the school committee does need to vote to exercise that renewal option.
All right. Do I have any discussion or questions about that before we, or I guess I'll take first a motion to approve the contract renewal with Durham School Services?
Wait, do we want to, do we want to discuss?
I think we do them separately.
Okay, do them separately.
Yeah, so we'll do the, we'll just knock this one out.
I move to, to accept the contract renewal for Durham School Services.
Beautiful. Do we have a second?
Or any discussion?
Or any discuss, well, yeah, either of those things. First, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Eric. Any discussion? Questions? We've looked at this just for the public record. We've talked about this in finance committee. This is not like we're just looking at it and being like, okay, fine.
No, and 3%, I've, I've been looking at what other districts have been contending with, and 3% is very reasonable.
This is one that's coming up for a vote, but we have discussed at length. All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't know if I can.
Oh, good question.
You can't participate.
Shouldn't have seconded.
So it should be roll call if we're gonna have, nope, okay. So all in favor were the ayes.
Aye.
All opposed? And any abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion passes. Okay, I'll turn it back to you.
This contract is for our food service management company. Under Mass Regulations, under DESI, we have a one-year contract that we are allowed to extend up to four times. So it's a five, potentially for a five-year contract. We are currently in year three, four, four of that. We can extend it one more time, I guess, 25, 26, and 27, so we have two options to renew. The renewal terms have been, have worked well for us, right? The management fee that they charge us is in line with what I'm seeing from other districts. The revolving fund balances are healthy. I think we're hearing positive things about what they're providing to our students and how families are responding to the meal options. So again, based on our relationship with the vendor and with sort of the financial aspect of it, what the costs are to the district, right? My recommendation is that we renew the contract with Chartwells.
Question?
Not specifically to the extension, and the school lunch account is in a good place. Depending on what happens with the USDA, that healthy place and cost in this contract, I guess, one, can the costs in this contract change if we don't get funding for what we expect from the USDA?
So the contract has built into it a, like, maximum cost to the district, right? So essentially, Chartwells is also gambling on situations that they will be able to, either through leveraging, you know, purchasing, because we're not the only district that they serve, right? So they may reach out to vendors and, you know, buy in bulk and do things like that if they're not getting either commodities through the USDA, or if they're not able to, if the reimbursement rates change, right? So they're also in sort of a similar position, but they're, the contract locks in sort of a maximum impact to the district.
If, if there was a gap?
Chartwells needs it.
Hmm? Chartwells needs it. That's the answer I wanted to. That's good, fun, too.
Yeah, well played with the.
Like that.
Mm-hmm. It's good, thank you. Anyone have any questions on that one?
Yeah, the contractor, just to put out there, the contract terms are really well regulated by DESI, right? In terms of reimbursement, right, what goes to it, what we can charge for meals, what they can charge for their industry fee, what they can charge for overhead. So in fact, like, we're voting to renew this contract. You can't actually sign the renewal until I send the renewal document to DESI, and DESI approves it. Right, so they approve all the terms and conditions of the renewal documents. So there, there is another layer of making sure that everything about this is on the up and up.
Great. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 26 contract renewal for Chartwells.
So moved. Eric can, should second.
Second. Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I actually have a question for you.
Absolutely.
Was that the last thing you had for us?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to ask you. This is really cool that we got a grant for a science curriculum. I guess that's a comment. Yay. Three years of funding that we have for this particular, okay. And then if we like it, we would have to incorporate that curriculum versus like the current science curriculum that we have?
So the way, my understanding is that there's sort of model units each use each year, and they build up more and more of the curriculum over time, right? So the amount of money that we get, we get a big chunk of it this year, even though we won't be implementing the curriculum until next school year, to buy initial materials, do professional development teachers, because they're part of a cohort. So there's some statewide trainings, right, they're in-person, virtual, digital, all that stuff. And then over the course of three, those three years, it includes buying the additional materials for the new units that go out. There will be some considerable costs, because some of it is hands-on, right? So they need, whether it's, you know, baking soda or balloons, or like those kinds of things that go along with it. But my understanding is that, and the teachers, I think, also have some opportunity to pick and choose which of the curriculum units they think will be most engaging to the students and roll that program out over the next three years.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
So I, I just really want to thank that 1-8 Foundation again. And one of the reasons why we're considered for this is because of the excellent work that's been done at ST Math. So the connection is, you know, South ST Math, if you remember in the fall, me mentioning this, that this is a foundation that really is in the leading edge of anything, any, any type of curriculum that is working, and that's been evidence-based, research-based across the country. And so to have earned their trust from the ST Math and how that, how that was implemented and how well it's done, actually did help us in getting, this science grant was highly competitive. There were many districts that wanted it, and we, we really wanted it because it's going to be amazing science for our middle school students. And the testing results that come from this program are really amazing. So I just want to, you know, say that we're very, very thankful that Julian Jacobson, who is the person that does, she's in charge, and she owns the 1-8 Foundation, put her trust again in East Hampton, that we're going to take on this program and really be a model for the state for it.
Nice.
Wonderful.
That reminds me of a couple of other questions I have in mind this year, which is, is it K through 8? Is it middle school only? Is it?
Middle school.
Middle school.
Middle school. So five, no, six, seven, eight?
Yes, six, seven, eight.
And then, speaking of the ST Math model of things, do we know, is it going to be a curriculum that happens during the science block, or is it another one where we fit in separate from the science block and find extra time for it?
So I don't know if this has been scheduled yet. I think they're working on how they're going to schedule that, but obviously it's not going to be interfering with the, the odds.
So it's a, so it's an enrichment program to like supplement the?
No, I believe it's.
It'll be, it'll become time.
It's replacing the science.
That's great, because that's one of the things that I know we've heard over and over. And especially that, you know, considerable costs, great, we want that for science, so.
That's really exciting.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, did our science teachers have a hand in helping write the?
So they, really Julian Levin did most of the work with that, and work with Meredith, and there were science teachers that were involved in the conversation, too.
Cool.
Yes.
Well, thank you to all who applied and worked on it. Anyone else have any questions for our director of business services? Okay. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to our school committee discussion. And first on the list here is Policy Subcommittee.
All right, so I flubbed it last time, but this time I am ready. We, we had a meeting in March to discuss the, the school choice guidelines, and in particular, the timeline of how, how families from other districts can participate in our school of choice program. So this is a program whereby if you don't live in East Hampton, you can basically fill out an application and say you would like your child to attend school in East Hampton. There's a lottery, and then it's kind of, it's administered randomly. So we really encourage anybody who's interested in coming to school here from other districts to apply, including families of kids with disabilities or kids with ELL needs. So the, the timeline previously was that, you know, we would have the number of school choice slots would be announced, applications would be due, and then the drawing for the lottery would occur one time over the summer. And the problem that we were having is that this was, our drawing was later than other districts, and so families were sometimes given a choice, like, you know, between East Hampton and another district, but they wouldn't find out about East Hampton until after they had to say whether or not they were going to participate in the other district. And then additionally, we didn't have any, any kind of other time to do that. So we've, the, the proposal, which came from, it was Julian, it was Julianne, right?
Yes.
It came from Julianne Levin, was to, in, on May 1st, make the number of available school choice slots announced on the East Hampton Public Schools website, which is very transparent. Families can go look at it and see how many choice slots there are. On June 1st, applications are due, so you can fill out the application between May 1st and June 1st. The first drawing will be held at the district office, or on that day, or the first business day after June 1st. And then if there's any more additional seats that are available, there will be a second drawing held on July 1st. So there's another chance, and that's from that initial pool of applicants. And then there's a, a third and final drawing on September 1st or after, or the next business day. Because we never really know what our enrollment is going to look like until it happens. So you might get to September 1st and realize that you did actually have more slots than you realized, and it just gives folks more flexibility to participate in that. So what, so what I've attached here is the actual policy update. Oh, actually, let me see what's attached.
Did we have it? Am I missing it?
You know what, I sent it, okay, I sent it to, originally, I wasn't going to be here and Laura was, and I had sent it to Laura to present, but we have it, we have it available here.
Okay, so the update.
Yeah, so, so what we would just be doing is just voting to, to update that. And also, if we could waive the two reading requirement for this, just because we don't have another meeting until after May 1st. So we want to make sure that we can, and I believe we can just waive that by moving to waive that.
So we moved to waive, vote, approve that vote, and then we can vote on?
Yes.
Okay, go on, reading.
Were there any questions or discussion about that before?
I guess the first, let's entertain a motion on waiving the need for two.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about the actual change. So I entertain a motion for waiving the two reads.
Okay, I move to waive the necessity of two readings for this policy and changing it to one reading.
For just this policy.
For just this policy.
Is that phrase correct? Okay, great. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, I have a second. Okay, I just want to make sure, superintendent, if there's anything that we're, we're policy committee members, like, is there anything we should be thinking about with not having two readings?
No, I don't think so.
Why do we have two readings usually?
Why do we have two readings usually? Because we like to give the public a chance to hear about what, what changes are being made, give input and feedback. And I would say the reason why I would like to have this waived is because, first of all, I messed it up last time. We should have had our first reading last time. But also, this is a really minor change that's going to make this, this more available for more people. And it's also not going to have any impact on any families that are already in district. So there's no, there's no change to anything other than the timeline and the drawings.
Those are great points of clarification, thank you. Laura?
Yeah, just to piggyback on Sam, if you want to be real technical, we had a discussion about this with all of the relevant points. We just didn't have the person. We just didn't have the precise language for Sam to perform the reading. So the opportunity for public feedback has occurred the way it would typically with a first and then second reading. That's awesome.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't...
Yeah.
We were covering...
No, I take that pretty seriously.
Yeah. Yes, I know you do. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those, any more discussion or question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes? Okay, and now I will entertain a motion for...
I'm gonna...
How do we want to phrase this?
So what I would like to do is I'd like to update, or I would like to move to update our existing school choice policy to the new school choice policy. Is that the right way to say that?
Yep, yeah, okay, yes, we're good.
Sounds good.
Do I have a second?
It's J F P B, by the way.
J F P B.
P B?
B B.
B B. It's...
B B.
I, it's J F, it's letters J F, B as in boy, B as in boy.
Oh, I didn't get that, so I'm glad you did that.
Yeah.
I would not have guessed those letters. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Eric. Okay. And I know you just went over this with us, just so I can clarify. We had one school choice drawing date. And we are moving to a policy where there are three different dates.
There are three different dates, one in June, one in July, and one in September.
Which allows for more...
The first one's earlier, so it doesn't get people to say, I was too late, I already decided, so.
Exactly. And then also we've added, just to clarify too, that the number of slots available will go out on May 1st on our website.
So we'll do a better job announcing it or be more clear with our announcement. And then we'll have three drawings at more appropriate times. Okay. Yeah, so it expands our eligibility or our eligibility better.
It will make this program easier to administer fairly.
Which is, yeah, great, just something that we've been trying to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and help families have options sooner.
Yep.
And so we have a great school and I think that there are people who would like to try some. Laura, is that your old hand up? Prior hand up, not your old hand. Okay, great. That was unnecessary. Any discussion, questions? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes? Anything else from the Policy Subcommittee?
Not at this time. I do have a brief CES update, which is not on there.
It is on there.
It is?
Right after the Finance Committee, so I'll bump back right over to you.
Sorry.
We do not have, so I'll go to...
Oh yeah, and then the transition policy, thank you Sue. So that's the second reading for this one. This one's in here. If I could go back and get it if it wasn't. So this was our policy that we wrote, just addressing transition services and how they will be offered. This is for students with disabilities who, in order to receive a free and appropriate public education, require transition services after grade 12. And so we talked about how these services are individualized, they may occur outside of school property. They should happen in the community whenever possible. And so I'd like to do a second reading of that. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
I think you should, and I'm looking to see if I have it to post. I don't have to, but that's a nice little bonus.
Yeah.
I don't know that I have it.
That's all right, I can get it.
See if it's in there.
Sorry, I'm doing the thing that the mayor was talking about earlier where I'm like going off of one thing and into the phone.
It's all right.
But I have it on here.
It's okay, we have the patience for it. When did we do the first read?
We did it at our last meeting.
Yes.
3:25. Or, yeah, it was 3:25 when we did it. But I don't have it attached on here like I thought I did. Well, I get it on my email.
Okay, I think I have it here too. Is this the one?
Right here.
All right.
It's up on the screen. Will you just confirm that that's the one?
Yes, that is the one.
This is it, right here.
Yeah. Do you want me to, do you want me to read it out loud or?
I think so, yes.
Okay, cool. So, yeah, I can see it. So students with IEPs are entitled to a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. Many students with IEPs work on goals unrelated to graduation requirements as a part of their free and appropriate public education. Students who are not able to meet graduation requirements as a result of their disability are entitled by law to special education services, which include secondary transition services that meet the requirement for a free and appropriate public education until age 22. The goal is to help a student move purposefully towards completion of their high school program and be prepared for planned post-high school opportunities. In the final year of high school, if the student has earned the competency determination, is on track to complete all local graduation requirements, and the school has provided the student's IEP services, including secondary transition services that meet the requirements of a free and appropriate public education, the district will plan to issue a regular high school diploma consistent with the projected graduation date included in the current IEP. This projected date may be the same as the student's age peers or it may be a later date consistent with the student's IEP. In some circumstances, the IEP team may determine that the provision of a free and appropriate public education requires that the student continue to receive additional transition services and/or other special education services, even though the student has earned the competency determination and completed all local graduation requirements. The team will then specify on the IEP the needed services and revise the date for the student's graduation with a high school diploma. Part of the transition process may include a Chapter 688 referral, which would refer a student to the appropriate adult services provider such as Mass Rehabilitation Commission, Department of Mental Health, or the Department of Developmental Services to assist in the transition to adulthood. Post-grade 12 transition programs shall be community-based and highly individualized to the transition needs of the student with a disability. The decision regarding the need for transition services, the type of transition services needed, and the duration of transition services is one that should take place during a student's IEP meeting, beginning no earlier than age 14 and no later than age 17, and shall be revisited every year at the student's IEP meeting until the student completes their schooling. Under the law, transition services must be a coordinated set of activities designated to be a results-oriented process that is focused on improving the academic and functional achievement of the child with a disability to facilitate a child's movement from school to post-school activities. Transition services are based upon the student's needs, strengths, preferences, and interests, and include instruction-related services, community experiences, the development of employment or other post-school adult living objectives, and if appropriate, acquisition of daily living skills and the provision of a functional vocational evaluation. So that is, uh...
Lovely.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is, I will say too, I'm glad that we're like putting this on the books because most districts don't have something like this in writing. So I think that's great.
I'd like to follow up on that because I was listening to your colleague Sam read this. I recently just happened to be able to have conversations with a few individuals who have benefited from this. And the positivity, how they feel about themselves, how they have been able to find meaningful work and focus and contribution in this community is so important. And I am so proud to be sitting here, listening to this and knowing that this is part of what this school and our educational system have put our values at. I really do not want this to go under and to see how important this is. They just, it just happened. It happened in my life and they came up and they said, I've done this, I've done this. And I'm, and they told me that they were benefits. And one of them said that they were so excited they were going to have the life skills at the high school and wanted to know if they could come in and to be a speaker.
That's super cool. That's awesome.
Yeah, I love that.
And to speak to the students about their experiences.
Wow, I love that.
That's awesome. And that's exactly like, and I think that one of the things that's really important to me, and I know is important to everybody else here, is like all of our graduates feel like they are ready for adulthood when they graduate. And so that, so I like, I like being able to put that into words.
Thank you for writing it. What do we need to vote on? Do we need to vote to accept the policy?
It's, yeah, it's the second reading, so vote to accept the policy.
Okay, great. I will entertain a motion to accept the policy.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Do we need to name the policy or, we're good, okay. Eric seconded, okay. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes? Okay. I will take the floor for a moment from you to give a Finance Subcommittee update, which is that I don't have one. Although I did make a note... Yeah, we'll go back. We're going to follow the agenda, just, you know. I have the actual chair watching me, so I'll make sure I do it. Just kidding, Laura. But I do want to ask the Director of our Business Services, do I need to schedule a Fin... You don't have to get up. Do I need to schedule a Finance meeting?
Probably do.
Okay. So my Finance Subcommittee update is that watch for a meeting to hit the books sometimes. That's it. Okay. CES update.
So actually, this is a good segue for the CES update because one of the things that I think I'm going to need to do is get some feedback from the Finance Subcommittee. So maybe I can join you in that, we can put it on the agenda.
That's fine.
So, you know, I went to the, so just for those of you who are tuning in for the first time, somehow I serve as our district's representative to the Collaborative for Educational Services, which is an education collaborative in Northampton. That provides some of our special education services and other, like, other services in the district that we contract with them on. And the purpose of collaboratives in our state is, you know, the idea is that we have all these small school districts and maybe we can't meet all of the needs in a way that makes sense financially, the needs of all of our students, particularly students with disabilities. So the idea is that we work together and establish these collaboratives and through the collaborative, we're able to meet more of our students' needs at a, in a more affordable way and also like in a really community-based way. It's a really good idea. The Collaborative for Educational Services in Northampton has recently, and I'm sure we all saw the news, had to lay off a number of their employees due to some financial problems, kind of in an unexpected way. And the Executive Director, Todd Gasta, you know, said that he was surprised by this and that it kind of was not something that they were anticipating needing to do and it was right around the holidays as well. I'm, you know, we had our last meeting in March, at that meeting, you know, the Executive Director kind of laid out a plan for financial stability, which I thought was a good start. I'm not, I'm not super satisfied with it. One of the things that he has offered to do is to be a little bit more transparent about kind of the inner workings of the organization. And so I noticed today that he actually like put out, one of the things he was going to do was like make some videos to try to help staff kind of understand what was going on. So he did actually, one of them came out today, I just haven't had a chance to read it or to watch it, rather. But I think, you know, one of the ways that the collaborative is dealing with the rising costs and kind of the financial challenges that they're having is they're raising the cost for services, including like all the services that we contract with them for. Now, one of the things is as members, our rates are only going up a little bit, whereas the non-member districts who use their services, the rates are going up by about 25%.
You mean like our membership rate or our tuition?
The tuition.
Okay, sorry.
So most collaboratives, like the way that most collaboratives work is they're essentially special education schools. And the collaborative in Northampton is a little bit different. They have two special education, well, they have one special education program and then another, another school. They have the Mount Tom Academy and they have the Hack Academy. We have one student at each of those schools, we have an 11th grader at each one. So no graduate, no, neither of them are graduating this year. I found out at the last meeting, just to check. But, so, you know, we have two students initially before the rates went up, which, you know, we all voted on at the collaborative. I had thought, I don't necessarily know, you know, we should look and see kind of what we're getting for our membership and if it's, you know, I would like to look at Lower Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative as well, where I know we have a number of students who attend school there. I'd like to kind of look at the financials and just sort of make sure that we're, that it makes sense for us to continue to be a member of CES or maybe it would make more sense for us to focus more of our energy on Lower Pioneer Valley instead. But also, you know, I just, I have some kind of serious concerns about sort of the direction and the kind of financial stability of that agency. And I did not, I asked some questions at the last meeting. I didn't really find the answers to be super reassuring. So I think, I think I would appreciate some guidance from the committee generally, but I think it would make sense to start with finance because I would like to have a better understanding of what our relationship to the collaborative is currently. So, you know, it's tricky. I really like the collaborative, like, and it's a great organization in a lot of ways, but in terms of like what is best for our district right now and like what East Hampton needs right now, I just want to make sure that we're making, we're getting what we need out of that partnership.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So for that, I know that there's sort of a bunch of things that CES does.
Yeah.
So this does not, would not impact like our contract with them for, is it called the Joy and Justice?
Yeah, Joy and Justice.
Would that be the same?
Well, this is what I need more information on. Like, I don't, so the collaborative does a lot of, like, they have a lot of programs that we benefit from that aren't necessarily the programs that we would normally get from a collaborative, you know. So I'd be interested in finding out more about that in particular. Like, because I don't know if there's a member rate, like, it's not something that really gets, we don't really discuss that specific contract at these meetings. So I want to just kind of see what our relationship is now. Because the other thing I'd like to work on, and I talked to a couple other of the CES members about this, is like, we are all facing actual issues with like finance, like education finance right now. Like, you know, at McKinney-Vento Transportation, Special Education Transportation, Special Education out of district placements in general, residential placements when they come up, you know, are huge. Like, these are things that we might be able to use the collaborative to help us with a little bit. And yet it's like very little of what the collaborative actually does for our district. So I would like to kind of talk with my colleagues on the collaborative board as well about like, are there ways that we can actually like partner with other districts in Hampshire County, for instance, around special education transportation? Like, are there ways that we can maybe like locate some programs at each of our districts that are like more specialized and we use collaborative, you know, collaborative support for that? Like, I just want to, I feel like a lot of the general rules don't apply right now. Like, I feel like, you know, the last couple of months in particular, in regards to kind of funding, federal funding that we used to think was fairly stable suddenly isn't. You know, I kind of feel like the rule of gravity has changed and I just don't really know what to expect, which to me means like we need to be thinking like kind of creatively around problem solving and like maybe trying some things that have been tried before and didn't work then or trying some things that are a little bit different or kind of out of the box. So, you know, I've talked with a couple of board members, like kind of one-on-one, just to kind of gauge kind of where they're at. And I think it feels to me like there's definitely like an appetite for a bigger conversation. But I want to just like make sure that my facts are right, like that I'm correct about what I'm saying. And like, if I'm speaking for East Hampton on this board, I want to make sure that I'm representing us accurately.
So when you say you spoke with members of the board, you're saying the CES board?
The CES board, yeah, yeah.
Another clarifying question for you, or not a question, but a thought that as you're saying on that, what's the urgency, do you suspect around this? Like, this sounds like a great conversation that our incoming Superintendent might want. Right, so is it something that we like think about?
I would like to do some work on it later this spring and over the summer in particular. I know things are really busy right now. I don't think it's like such an urgent thing that we need to have an answer ready to go by our next collaborative meeting in May. But I, you know, it would be good for me to get kind of a, just a better under, maybe like, what would be helpful for me before our next meeting, our next collaborative meeting is at the end of May, I think. It would be really good to have a better understanding just of like East Hampton by then and then kind of the bigger picture stuff around like what do we really want from the collaborative? Or like what are we, you know, what are kind of our biggest unmet needs right now that a, that we, you know, the sort of things that like the collaboratives were designed for, you know. We could, we could talk more about that kind of over the summer and next fall. I don't necessarily, like, I don't want to cause any panic, like, I don't think we're about to, like, I don't think, you know, anything huge is going to happen in regard... regard to the collaborative before then, but I just like, I would just like to make sure that we're getting what we need, you know, and that this is kind of the best place for us to put our, our resources and our, um, you know, and our energy.
Yeah.
And I'd like to look at the, um, Lower Pioneer Valley too, and kind of what we're putting into Lower Pioneer Valley, 'cause it, if it ends up that like, we could save a lot of money by becoming members of Lower Pioneer Valley, you know, like, that's, like, that's a good thing to know, you know? Like, if that's meeting our needs more than CES's now for some things and not others, like, I just wanna make sure that we know what's, what's available, what's out there.
Sounds like we're in information gathering and then...
Yeah.
I don't know if this is, will be appropriate, of them being like, superintendent.
Yeah.
Director of Business Services, and maybe our CES rep would meet, and I don't know if that's the, the, yeah.
I think that would be good, yeah.
Get some full picture of it. Picture of all of that and then go from there.
Yeah.
Put out Julian to a ju, because she was involved with the...
Absolutely, the Joy and Justice. Yeah, and the equity, yep.
Yeah, and just to be very clear, like, we've been very happy with our services from the collaborative. Like, that's, and that has been consistent the whole time that I've been involved in any capacity in East Hampton.
Yeah.
We've always been very happy with the collaborative, so I don't, I, I don't want anybody to think that we're not happy with their services. I just wanna make sure that, um, that, you know, we're, we're making like, a informed decision, you know?
That's good to clarify. It's just a due diligence as elected officials that...
Exactly, like, I just wanna make sure that we're...
...allocate the district wisely.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you, Sam.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Sam? Okay, well, we look forward to...
I'm gonna try to send you guys those, I'm gonna remember, try to remember to send you those directors reports, kind of, when, when we get them and stuff, 'cause I just wanna make sure that you guys have, you guys are kind of informed about what's going on there as well.
Do those need to go, I guess you will figure that out, I was gonna say, do those go to Sue Colby and then they go into our packet?
Um, I just forwarded the last one.
Forward, okay.
Yeah. You know? It's all public information, it's not...
True, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's the sort of thing that, you know, everybody has access to, so...
Okay, I have a shrug on that one, so we'll, okay? Great.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
We'll take the shrug for now, and we will learn more.
Yeah.
Any other questions or thoughts on CES updates? Okay, um, I'm adding a D onto here, playground update, um, because it's now one of our, um, school committee discussion points, as it's an ad hoc, official ad hoc committee. Um, we've had two meetings, I think we've had one since the last time this school committee met though, so I don't, not two new ones. But work is underway, we have great community volunteers, student volunteers who are taking, um, the lead on different aspects of this. We have community members who have so much knowledge about rules around, like, the letter of the law around accessibility, but then also regardless of what the law is, like, how, what does accessibility actually mean? What can kids actually use and things like, how does shade qualify? Like, and that kind of, um, stuff. So, work is ongoing, we have a meeting scheduled for, um, let me confirm before I say it out loud.
April 28th.
It's April 28th, okay, perfect. April 28th at 5:30. Here, I'm working on getting a remote, um, access for that, because it just seems important to have remote options for a meeting about successful playground. So we're, we're working on that. We are happy to have everyone, anyone join us, kids are always welcome, they don't have to sit quietly in meeting, you know? Bring your kids, you want? Yeah.
I, I'm just wondering, as members of the public, is it really Bea or Ben?
It's Bea.
It is Bea.
It is Bea, a fifth grader, yeah, that's a great question.
I had that initial thought as well.
When I wrote the minutes, I did wonder if I should write Beatrice, but she announced herself as Bea.
Okay.
So I put Bea. It's a fifth grader, um, along with you. Yes, that's actually a really good question. And that's the minutes for the playground thing. Okay, school update?
Well said.
Don't have anything?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to action items.
Okay, I, I don't, um, I just, uh, the, my budget, I was going to bring it to city council on April 16th, and I want to relook at revenue, so I'm not, this is not a change or asking for a change in expense budget, which you guys have submitted and have voted on, um, just for your knowledge, the public knowledge. So I, um, I wanna check and double-check the revenue before I submit it to city council, and, uh, my thanks to city council president and a finance chair, um, instead it will drop on May 7th, because there is no April 30th city council meeting. What this may do is change the department subcommittee hearing with the subcommittee, finance subcommittee. Um, we're figuring that out, and we'll give suggested, uh, dates. Looking at when these next meetings are will certainly accommodate, so I just wanted to put that out, um, to the public.
Kind of school-related?
Yeah. This subcommittee, one, uh, I need to, one to four at City Space. We, uh, NEPM, New England Public Media, um, has declared, uh, four-one-three day, right? April 13th, because Boston has two of their own holidays. It's a one to four Sunday at City Space, and the reason why I mention it, one, it's gonna be fun, uh, but two, uh, the host of the Tumble Science Podcast for Kids will be there.
Oh, cool.
To do activities, as well as the Word Nerd and, uh, Mr. Universe, like, Word of the Universe. I know, yep, I see that, yep, well deserved.
Wow, our kids listen to the same podcast, it seems.
Yeah, yeah, it's amazing, podcast.
It's really cool.
I listen to it, my kid's over 30. Um, as well as, um, Professor Power Green from Clark University, who does, uh, uh, history as well, so, there'll be music and all of that, but I thought it was just very interesting and I'm kind of fangirl on the Science Podcast. So it's free, everybody's welcome, um, and it is the four-one-three's first celebration of our own holiday.
That's cool.
I like that. Yeah, it took me forever to figure out four-one-three was April 13th.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
It was gonna be, you remember, yeah, it's gonna be. Perfect. Uh, Laura, did you have a question about four-and-three day?
No, but that sounds amazing. I just wanted to make sure we're shouting out and sending all of our positive vibes to our We the People team, who made their travels today to DC, their sightseeing today, they start testimony tomorrow in the Nationals competition.
Incredible, yes. And they've been really good about updating on Facebook. I don't know if there's anywhere else where it's getting, where updates are coming through, but, um, check Facebook for...
Laura, my phone.
We wanna make sure, we wanna make sure we shout out, uh, the child of one of our, the grandchild of one of our own, who will be testifying and who's, who just looks fantastic. I saw her at the crack of dawn this morning and she looked beautiful, and we're just gonna shout her out, not by name, to, we don't wanna embarrass her, but we're sending her good vibes.
Well, right back to the chair, the chair's son is the mentor to the grandchild of the committee.
Yeah, it's not at all obvious now, which people were talking about. Yes, we are very excited for our We the People students and mentors and teachers who are there. They're an amazing bunch, so we wait eagerly to see what happens. Um, I feel like that all reminded me of there was something else, but I guess, do we have anything else for school update?
Can I do a brief school update?
Yeah.
I, I spoke to my colleague, Sam Hunter, on the way home from our last meeting, and we have decided that we would like to sell out the musical performance in May. It's Little Shop of Horrors, and at the risk of it sounding like I'm saying something personal, but we, there will be a performance by the, there was last Saturday, a performance of the cast, did little selections at a flower shop here in town, and there will be another one in the first Saturday of May during Art Walk, and where you can buy your tickets and see the cast, it's amazing. We have a great performing arts, uh, at the high school, East Hampton High School, and I just think the community, we should fill those seats for those kids.
It's a great idea.
Sell it out.
Very exciting.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I just have one thing too.
Absolutely.
So today, we, um, brought in Helen Frost, uh, she's a noted, um, author, she lives in Indiana. During, uh, Read Across America Day, uh, I read a second grade and a third grade class, and I brought her book, and the students were shocked that I knew a real author, and , uh, they are also being authors, they're, they're each writing stories and poems, and they were so interested, I instantly became very famous, uh, because I knew an author, right? And they're like, wow, you know an author, so, and we zoomed the author in today, so, right into the classroom, so they were able, uh, to speak to the author about writing, and, uh, they had great questions, uh, they asked, um, for a third grader to say, how has writing become your passion?
Oh, that's amazing.
That was an amazing question, and then I asked, another question was, um, how did you, uh, choose writing as your career pathway? It's a third grader asking questions like that. And then, of course, we had great questions like, um, do you have any pets, right? Because, uh, the book, the book was actually about birds.
Right.
And it was a partnering of an author with a photographer, and so they're beautiful bird pictures. And so each of the students are getting a book, and each of the students are getting assigned bookmark, so it was a real, it was, you know, really nice conversation for them to meet a real author, talk about writing, read some of their writing to the author. And then, at the end of it, whenever it was over, they went out to recess, I was waiting while they were going past me in line, and they're like, we are gonna be an author one day. So it was such, you know, it was just a little inspirational opportunity for them to meet somebody that was real.
Right.
That hopefully, um, they wanna continue to be readers and writers, 'cause that's important for our kids, to be readers and writers.
That's awesome. That's amazing.
Yep.
Which grade was it?
Second and third.
Second and third. That's great. Any other school updates, things? Okay, um, we'll move on to action items, and I think, do I need to have Sam read the action items? Or should I read them to myself and then?
I can read them.
Okay, Sam will read them, in my stead.
Uh, motion to approve the minutes of the March 31st, 2025, uh, Mountain View School Playground Ad Hoc Committee Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Eric, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes?
Uh, I move to approve the minutes of the March 4th, 2025 Finance Subcommittee Meeting.
Do I have a second? Second. Which is a second, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Do I abstain from even meeting notes?
It's a great question.
Why not?
Abstain, abstain.
Abstain, sure. Yeah, just, just, why not?
It'll pass anyways.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Motion passes.
I move to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2025, Mountain View School Playground Ad Hoc Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that one was Eric. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes?
Um, I move to approve the minutes of the March 19th, uh, March 19th, 2025 Regular Session Meeting.
Do I have a second? Is there a group?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Um, uh, so... Yes, um, and, the, um, a couple of days after, um, this particular meeting, specifically, concerning the lawsuit that, uh, we were the second plaintiff, uh, and I, I will, uh, preface this, um, by reminding folks that, um, the statement I'm about to read is not political or partisan, it is just the plain fact that we are plaintiffs, and the defendant happens to be the executive branch of our government. Um, and, okay, here we go. Okay. Mayor, I am so glad to see East Hampton taking the Department of Education fight right to the Trump administration. I am a former specialized teacher, and I know how high the stakes are for our kids. Thank you for standing up for all of our family, our Senator Elizabeth Warren, and thanks us directly, so, yes.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I would just say, I'm even more proud that we took the vote we did, um, in fighting for our kids. So, thank you, Laura and Sam, for, uh, leading the, the charge, and, um, thank you.
Sorry. Um, thank you for reading us that email.
Thank you.
That's, um, very meaningful, the support of Senator Warren.
Can I just say that?
Absolutely.
I think we've gotten probably 20 similar, uh, emails, really, from this community, saying the same thing, that, is there anything that, um, they can do to help us? Just email them, um, if they think it's important, and the other thing I, I just wanted to add is that because, um, some of them in East Hampton did, did sign on as plaintiffs, uh, I think that had an influence on Worcester, also signing on, right, as, as also doing witnesses or declarations, so, uh, I, we haven't heard anything, uh, yet on what's happening with that, but, uh, we did, um, sign all the documents and corrected them, and, uh, Julia, myself, and Julian spent some substantial time making sure that all the information was correct, and so that has been, uh, all passed in, and I guess now we're just waiting to hear what are the results of that.
Appreciate it. And we'll definitely update the community as we get updates.
Thank you for all the time that you've put into it, and folks in the administrative central office and in the schools, and Sam, to you as well, bringing it forward to us and advocating and, um, helping us understand, and, and also to you, Laura, who has spent, I don't know, do you wanna estimate maybe like, 200 hours on phone and Zoom calls?
Uh, Maureen is the MVP. Maureen and her team, um, were the ones who know all of the intricate data, and we promised them we would do all that heavy lifting, that this was a decision made by the committee and not by the administration, and yet.
They did so much heavy lifting.
Uh, when, you know, when that responsibility shifted inevitably to them, they just took it up without complaint and did really excellent work, and we're just deeply appreciative.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what a great way to make the national news.
Yes, yes.
Well said. Yes. That's for you, Megan, that was for me. Oh my gosh. Thank you for reading that. I believe we had the original motion. Do we have a second for that one?
Second.
Second from Eric. Okay, we did, we already had it. We had it from Linda, I've not done, double-seconded it. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, proudly. Okay, the next one on the list is the, uh, minutes from the 3:25 Regular Session and Public Hearing, and those were a long set of minutes, and I'm gonna claim, I don't know what happened, I wrote the minutes, and I just stopped apparently before the action items, so that was my fault, I had to amend those minutes.
Okay.
We are tabling a vote on them.
Okay.
We're culpable.
We won't, we won't worry about that one.
Can we just verify that we're, we okayed the calendar though, because there are so many?
So, we okayed the calendar, the calendar can go out, we approved all the action items at that.
Yes.
Meeting, and I do have the notes, so I can, you know, I'm going to go back and I'm going to update and indicate where I'm updating, and unfortunately for Sue, Sue will help me with all of that, so my apologies, I just, it was like page four, and I don't know, I lost track of what was happening.
It's all good.
So, we are tabling those, but yes, we have voted on the school calendar, and that can go, can go out.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, that brings us up to F, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I move to approve the minutes of the February 5th, 2025 Regular Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Eric, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, all those opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes.
And then we have a out-of-state field trip request. I move to approve the out-of-state field trip request from East Hampton High School to New York City.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is for the, uh, this is for a Broadway show, which sounds awesome.
Which, again, I just like to comment on that the, these opportunities that we're able to provide for the children in this school district are, these, these types of experiences are life changers for students. One day, one experience can really change the momentum of their life, how they feel about themselves, even just for life, them, so I'm just, again, pleased that we can offer these opportunities.
Absolutely.
Can I just jump off what Linda's saying, is that some of the students that are in Washington DC come home Saturday, and then they go to Panama, right, next week, so that, how many students really get to go and explore the world like this district offers? So, they're going to be in Washington DC, and then off to Panama, Panama Canal, so that, those are some examples of really great opportunities.
And I just want to say thanks to the music boosters who are funding this, so.
This is the really reasonable cost.
Yes, very much.
The music boosters are.
We can also, we can also point out, East Hampton music boosters are always accepting donations.
Yes.
Great points. Who can, has your role as a former booster, right? And this is not overnight, just one day, right, they go there and back?
That's what it looks like, yeah, looks like tonight, yeah.
Cool, any other discussion or question about the out-of-state field trip? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? If that was an aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Have a great time. Do we know what they're going to see? I didn't even ask.
Doesn't say.
Yeah, it's the size. Okay, well, someone let us know at some point.
It's going to be a surprise, the kids don't even know.
Whoa, that's kind of a fun surprise. Okay, so when they get back, can one of them come tell us about it?
Yeah.
The chair, will you have them do that?
Great, yeah, we'll do.
Just raise your hand for that, I appreciate that. Okay. Okay, so we have, our next meeting dates are listed here.
What about this? Memorandum of understanding, it's not, it's not in the agenda though.
Is it during executive session?
I believe.
It's executive session.
It's executive session.
Your packets away.
Oh, it's executive, yeah, right.
So, before we move to executive session, future upcoming meeting dates are listed on the agenda, 5/13, 5/27, 6/10, 7/22, and then I'll stop reading them because sometimes we do make some changes over the summer, but they are all listed and scheduled up through the end of the year. And at this point, we are going to move into executive session pursuant to MGLC 30AS 21A2 to conduct collective bargaining sessions with the EEA Teachers Association, and we will adjourn directly from executive session. And I believe we roll call into executive session. Is that right? Yes, we do. Do we roll call, do we roll call out? But it's, we roll call in and there, so we're just done here. Okay, thank you all so much. Laura, we missed you.
We will return.
Same, we won't return. We won't return, we will adjourn directly from executive session. And, so that concludes the side, you know, public, yeah, the public portion. Thank you all so much, mostly you, Laura, looking at us, okay.[1749.74]